Everybody, my name is Michael Saunders. I live at 312 Conigan Drive in Groveland. Although I'm not a resident of Morton, I've worked in Morton since 2002. I'm the principal at Grundy Elementary School. And tonight, I would like to just speak to you for just a moment about Mrs. VanderVorn and her property on Main Street. I'm here to support her request to rent space in her building to Center Stage Dance. I have a little bit of expertise in the area of dance. I have two daughters, Katie and Rachel, and they both were dancers, especially Rachel. Rachel danced at the junior high and at the high school, and she danced at several different studios here in town, including Center Stage on Jefferson Street, the Inspired Arts Academy on Main Street, and Captivation Dance in the Field Shopping Center. So, as a father, I will tell you that after many years of taking and picking up Rachel from those three locations, I will tell you that of those three, the location on Main Street in Ann's building was definitely my preferred for lots of different reasons, but mostly because of the ease of pickup and drop off and those kinds of things. I certainly understand the concern with really any location regarding the safety of the children. And as a school administrator, that is my top priority. I spend my days trying to keep our students safe. As I'm sure you're well aware, the Morton School District in recent years has spent a fair amount of money, probably thousands of dollars, improving our parking and our drop off and pickup, all for the safety of students. And despite all of those expenditures, we still have situations every day where kids, you know, are in harm's way because of, you know, just impulsive decisions that kids make. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is, no matter what you do to protect students or children, things are going to happen. The bottom line for tonight regarding my comments in support of Ann, I just hope that the board would consider allowing her to rent this space to this dance studio. I think that the dance studio is a good thing for downtown Morton. I think there are many businesses in the downtown area that bring families and children into the downtown, which I think is a wonderful thing. You think about businesses like Dairy Queen and Great American and the skating rink and other businesses of that nature that bring families into our downtown area, and those are all great things. And I see the dance studios as being a part of that. If Ann is not allowed to have the dance studio at her property, then my understanding is that all of that dance will continue to be on Jefferson Street at their current location. I think that the possibility of having those two separate locations for dance, the one on Jefferson Street and then the one on Main Street, would be a good thing to kind of spread that business out a little bit, spread the traffic out a little bit. So, again, you know, these are just my personal opinions, but I've known Ann for quite some time, and she's a good friend of mine, and I would really like to see her to have the ability to rent that space to the dance studio. I think it would be a good thing for her and certainly a good thing for Morton. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board?
I'm Ann VanderVorn. I own a building at 316 South Main. And thank you, Mike. I appreciate you and Caleb coming tonight very, very much to support me. I'm sorry to say I'm going to start out. I'm angry because in all honesty, I didn't even know I was going to speak. I didn't plan on speaking tonight. I called Mike and asked him if he would come and add his two cents. And I'm so frustrated, I thought the best thing for me to do would be just to be quiet. And he said, "You're not going to speak." Then all of a sudden, it dawned on me because Brad has been fantastic. Brad is the one who said he would present it to the board. And when he did, like he said, "It'll buy some time, and then maybe you can go to the planning committee," because I have talked to Karen and even some people on the planning committee. But then all of a sudden, when I talked to Mike, I thought, "Wait a minute. If I assumed you were going to vote and it would go to the planning committee, but Brad said if it votes and you all vote it down, then we don't have the chance to go to the planning committee." And I guess why I'm angry is because I feel like there's been no conversation about this. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but Mayor Kaufman, I've called you four times, left messages that returned my call. I've never heard from you. It is kind of hard to get hold of some of you. I feel bad because I've had this business for 45 years. I've never had to go to a zoning meeting to ask for permission to have a business there. I feel bad for Amy because I did have, as Mike said, Rachel came to Academy of Arts, its Inspired Arts Academy. When it was a dance studio, all the mirrors are put up and still there for them. There is absolutely no problem. Then when I found out I had to go to permission and somebody kind of got upset with me because they act like I should have known the zoning rules, well, I feel bad because here and again, my age and zoning, I didn't know. So, I did go to Brad Marks, who has been very congenial. He gave me all these sheets to fill with all the zoning, B1, B2, B3, all of it. There is not one thing on any of this zoning that even applies to a dance studio, a dance hall, a dance studio. There's nothing in here that has to do with dance. And I'm thinking, "That's not a problem," because I have been around long enough that I know there's something called special uses. A lot of, when I was in business, active business, a lot of people would come and get a special zoning permit with something special use, I think they called it. So, I thought, "That's no problem. We'll come and get a special use." That doesn't seem to be an answer either. And I guess then I got really upset when I saw my B2, which is general zoning, which I know I'm in general business zoning because I've always had just general business. I see number 46, Esports Cafe. This board did that just two years ago. And like I told Mike, and this is what brought it up when I was talking to his wife, Joshua, his younger brother, came to a birthday party last year, Esports, in my property, in my building. There was 20 kids there, paid activity that a parent dropped their child off to play a sport. Amy wants a dance studio. Same thing, a paid activity that a parent's going to pay for, drop their children off and come and get it. The same activity. So, to be honest, I'm getting to the point, especially because I haven't had some returned phone calls, there isn't the conversation about this that I feel like should be, that I feel like you just want to get rid of her. It's kind of like, "You want us just to shut up and go away?" Well, obviously, we aren't shutting up and we aren't going away, and we don't mean to be a pain in the neck, but I think with anything, economy is horrible right now. And how these kids, and now I'm even talking Sarah O'Shea, how they're affording to stay in business and pay for these utility bills, I don't know what you expect out of them. So, here, I get rid of the bakery, to be honest, because it is, she's not paying as much money for rent because I felt bad. I need the income, so I try, we find her a place that she can go that's smaller. And I get Amy when I'm thrilled because I get my rent back to what I normally have, and then you people take it away from me. And I think if anything, you would be thrilled that more business is coming down south. You've got a $2 million park there that when people drop their children off, which by the way, I sit in Herb Ross parking lot just to watch what activity is. The majority of parents came in Main Street, they dropped their child off, and they went out on First Street. Absolutely no cars jamming on brakes, no kids running out on Main Street. It was as safe as possibly could be. So, I thought, "This is a good thing." And the fact that she's been in business for 20 years, the revenue that she's brought to this town, it's not like she's a new business. I would think you would appreciate that she has been bringing the business to Morton. You do get revenue off. Instead, you're trying to shut her down. And you could say, "We're not trying to shut her down. We just want her to go to B3." Another question, I go to Brad, and I say, "Great, no problem." The tattoo shop is 330. I'm 316. Put me back into B3, which I used to be 50 years ago. "Oh, no, no, I don't think we can do that." But you can fill out all the papers. But why should I fill out the papers if you're going to vote it down? So, I guess I'm just, I'm really confused, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be, I hear my kids and I'll say, "Mom, calm down." I don't mean to yell, I don't mean to be ungrateful, but I'm very confused because I think there needs to be more conversation about this than to just shut it down. I guess I'm bad because for 17 years, I was retired and played with my children and grandchildren, thoroughly enjoyed it. They don't need me anymore. So, in 2016, I reopened Ann's, but instead of having it in the front in the 2,000 square feet, I went to Ann's on the side and had 600. Leanne Brown and Roger Spangler could not have been more gracious, could not have bent over backwards trying to help me get on my feet again and start a new business. And instead, one thing Brad has told me at least three times, "I work for the board, and the board works for you." I don't feel like you're working for me at all. If anything, it's just like, "Get rid of her, get something else in there, it's no big thing." So, I'm sorry, and I wasn't prepared tonight, but like I said, I had no idea. I thought you were going to vote and go to the planning commission or planning board, and that's where I was headed to. Oh, then I did go to Brad on the 7th of October and said, "Let me go to the planning committee." And he said, "You can't, you don't have the time." No, I said, "It's the fourth Monday, correct?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "Great, put me on the agenda." He said, "Well, there's nothing on the agenda, so you can't go." I said, "Put me on the agenda." Well, I guess I was too late. So, I'm not still sure, when is it? Like, if I wanted to go to planning committee in November, what date do I have to?
The first Monday of the month is the deadline.
Okay, see, and I was bad. I came the 7th.
Because of the label notice.
See, and I'm sorry, I came on the 7th of October, which was Friday instead of Monday. So, I'm trying to follow the rules, I'm trying to do what's right, but I think we need more conversation. And Mike, thank you very, very much, both of you, for coming and lending your energy. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening, everyone. Leanne Brown with the Morton Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council. Just a couple updates coming up, and thank you. I'm not sure, I've been here since our '56 Morton Pumpkin Festival, and just what an incredible year it was. Our community came out with incredible support, but definitely want to give thanks and kudos to police chief, to the village. It takes village to host this festival, and so thanks again for all of your support and making that happen. And on that note, we will be able to celebrate. The mission of festivals to gather and give back, and our give back celebration will take place on National Pumpkin Day on October 26. So, stay tuned for all of the financial give backs that we will be issuing out based on the success of our festival. And thanks to all of you and the many others that came and enjoyed the Pumpkin Festival this year. Just a couple other business notes. Tomorrow is a ribbon cutting to celebrate Elite Signs, Graphic and Signs, at their new location. 4:30 PM will be their ribbon cutting there in, back behind Great Harvest and the most recent NHS Design Builders next to Kenner's Springtime Flower Shop. So, join us at 4:30 tomorrow. And then, again, on Wednesday, we will celebrate KM Design Jewelry that will be doing a ribbon cutting. She's an online business, does sell some of her product through KC Clothing, but again, 4:30 on Wednesday at 4:30 Scone's to celebrate her business opening and a part of our business community. So, just wanted to share those with everyone. The public is welcome.
All right, thank you. Anyone else yet? Okay. If not, the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting October 3, 2022, and the approval of the bills. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Lunar?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Mennel?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Motion carries?
The only thing I have tonight is to tell you that the arts are alive in Morton. I went to the concert for the Morton Vocal Music Grace Church last Tuesday, and the church was packed, and the choir had hundreds of students. It was amazing how many students from grade school all the way through high school. The grade school choir filled the stage. So, music, our band, you know, takes, our band is, 25% of the students that go to high school go out for band. So, when they won that world championship award three years ago, the band director travels the world, has never seen that number before. And now we have it going on in the singing department. It was, the place was packed, and people were even sitting in the balcony. So, they are going to have a concert in December, if anybody wants to go, December 5, a holiday concert. So, they were quite good. And that's all I have tonight. So, Village Clerk?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator?
I have one item tonight, Your Honor. The Business District Commission met last Wednesday and made a recommendation for a building improvement grant for Zoverus Construction.
Motion to approve. Second.
They are applying for their location at 95 Commerce Drive for a grant. Their total project cost was $27,650 for exterior landscaping. So, the Business District Commission recommended the maximum grant of $10,000. Have I had any questions?
The entire $27,000 is just for landscaping?
Yes. They're going to take everything out that is currently there and replace it all with new stuff because I guess it's been there over 20 years, I think he said.
Any comments, questions? Call the roll.
Parrot?
Yes.
Mennel?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Lunar?
Yes.
Motion carries?
That's all I have.
Chief of Police?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Corporation Council? Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Director of Public Works?
Several items tonight, Your Honor. First, Item B, I'd like to add that first, so I don't forget. The Fall Landscape Waste Program does start Saturday, October 22, and runs through December 4. It will be closed for Thanksgiving and the Friday after. That. Item A, I'd like to ask for permission tonight to request bids for the new gas and water building to be constructed at 445 East Worth of Hurstwood Street.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and a couple things I put in front of each of you, some elevation views, site plan, floor layout. Lee Garrett's, Wes Suter, we've worked hand in hand with them at Keitch Architectural. They're here tonight, in case you had any questions or any questions after tonight. We're not quite ready to go out for bid, but I would say within the next, you know, week, two weeks, we would be ready to go out for bid and hopefully open bids, you know, Thanksgiving, 1st of December, something like that. And at that time, we would come back to you guys, you know, for approval of those contracts. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I know Wes and Lee would also.
Questions or comments? Not called.
Mennel?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Motion carries?
And lastly, Item C, I'd like that for approval of the resolution approving easement with the Hodel Family Revocable Trust.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And this is, this is going to, the cost for this is $6,726. We've been working with them for quite some time, and this is the final piece of the puzzle of getting the new 16-inch water main from Detroit Avenue to Erie. So, this would be the last piece, and we would be ready to go. So, if you've been out there on the Erie side, the water, some of the water mains delivered, the crops are down as of last week, so I'd anticipate starting to go into the interstate not too far off. So, this would be the last piece that I'd like to approve on.
Any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Leach?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Lunar?
Yes.
Mennel?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Motion carries?
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Zoning code, Parrot?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Village trustee, trustee Mennel?
In your pocket is a resolution regarding proposed only the amount of head men on the dance studio in the B2 general business district. And I would like to make a motion that we approve this resolution 09-23.
Second.
Anyone want to add anything to that, comments?
We have had much discussion in our meetings and outside of our meetings about this situation. And so, I think we're all fairly clear on what's going on. But I just wanted to say a few things about, say, safety. What was said tonight about traffic flow in a main out on First. I have a four-year-old granddaughter that goes there, and so, safety is a concern of mine. But I think that's a very safe environment for Renley to be dropped off and a place for her to have her dance class. As far as the business itself, very impressive organization there. And this goes without saying, I know it's not the deal, but it's an established business that I think we should support. Doesn't quite fit. I know that there's, we don't like to zone for each individual situation, but here we are. And so, if we could change the wording so that B2 would include dance studio such as that, I think it's the right thing. We can, it's not a sketchy business, it's not a questionable business. It's children learning to dance. And both of my daughters went to dance for years and years and years growing up, and so I understand the whole thing. It's not, and, but it's not all about that, I get it, but the traffic pattern, the safety of the children, I think it's just not a bad spot to have a dance studio in that location.
One comment or explanation on a procedure, just so the board's clear. As has been communicated to the affected parties, there are two and only two zoning solutions to the present situation. It's not a permitted use in B2, so it's not an available special use in B2. So, either the board changes the ordinance to make it either a special or a permitted use, which would require a hearing before the Plan Commission. So, the resolution tonight, if you were to adopt it, would refer the matter to the Plan Commission for a hearing on either making it a permitted use or a special use. The alternative option is for the property owner or a tenant with the property owner's consent to apply to have the property rezoned. That is of the applicant's initiation, and that would go directly to the Plan Commission and not to you first. Ultimately, it would come back to you for approval, as all rezonings do. So, this is the, the resolution tonight is the, is option, is one of two options. It is the one option that's initiated by the board. There is a second option that the affected parties have, which has been communicated to them. So, that's what you'd be voting on tonight, is making that recommendation for the Plan Commission to hold a hearing, and then after they hold a hearing, it would come back to you for final action.
That would be to add this in as a permitted use in B2?
Permitted or special. The Plan Commission could make a recommendation on either. So, it would be to define it as a, as a, as a use, and then to either make it permitted or special use in B2.
Make a quick comment. And we spoke quite a while today, you know, talking about it, and just want to reiterate kind of what we talked about as far as, you know, the zoning of this. And it's absolutely nothing against, you know, yourself or the business, business at all. And it's not, me personally, don't look at it as far as, you know, a safety issue and establishment, the well-established business. You know, that, to me, doesn't weigh in on the decision for, and I look at it just strictly from a zoning standpoint. And from a zoning standpoint, if you look at the list of the B2 that are allowed in the B2, you know, it's mostly made up of, almost entirely made up of retail businesses. And...
Not too many retail, I'm sorry, but there's not too many retail.
No, I'm saying the zoning, there's a list of, the list of zoning allowed businesses in B2 is made up of shops and retail shops. And looking at it from that standpoint, I don't feel that the dance studio fits inside that B2, kind of the feel of what that district is. And that's kind of how I feel about it. And we talked about that for a long time today. But unfortunately, I think, you know, the, you know, talk about safety and talk about, you know, being a well-established business, it's, it's great, and I like that part, but it doesn't weigh in on my decision. I think the other thing, you know, we talked about earlier is on, you know, there's a difference between the B2 and B3 zoning, and there's a, there's a line there. And that line has to be somewhere. Otherwise, you know, there's no, you might as well just have one, one business district and no line. And I'm not saying where that line is, is perfect, but I'm happy with it where it's at now, and I'm a little concerned about kind of slippery slope of starting to move businesses, you know, okay, well, this business can go in here, and this one can go in there. And I think it kind of opens up the door for a lot of issues in the future by doing so.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a chance to leave?
Well, we'll let the, finish the trustees' talk first.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I concur with trustee Parrot on what he said. And additionally, I've heard a lot of statements that it's about the children, and I do not factor that in as well. It makes no difference to me if it was a dance studio where you're using, teaching young children to dance, or if it's a dance studio utilized by 18 and older. It's a dance studio. And I have to look at it just that way. There's also an issue with some parking there, and I know I've heard several times at meetings here about all the parking that's available. There's 11 spots. If you utilize Ann's business of her, of her own, there's five, plus six in front of the business in question here. And that should really be four and five because neither one has a handicap spot as required by the ADA. There are 17 spots that run alongside the Memorial Plaza. Those are actually owned by another property owner within that building. And those seem to be what the parents are utilizing. So, that could cause a conflict later down the road with the, with Ann and that property owner, but that's, that's taking place as well. So, I think we all have seen a map that our staff has put together with all the businesses, whether they're B2 and B3 and B1 within the downtown area, and it's mainly all B2. And that's, as trustee Parrot said, primarily retail or professional buildings, which are the permitted use for B1. So, that's all I have.
I agree with trustee Parrot, trustee Hilliard, what they said. Additional to that, what's concerning to me, when I look at the community as a whole, we have made... we, we've made decisions, for example, for the dance studio that's out on Queenwood, they had to go out to where the zoning met their business. If we bend the rules to bring this dance studio downtown, how do we look in the eyes of that dance studio when we made them go out to Queenwood Road? When we asked the tattoo parlor to go to B3, instead of where they wanted to go in the middle of downtown, there's another business that wanted to do henna-type tattoos on the eyebrows. And we denied allowing them to do that on Jefferson Street, because we did not let, let the tattoo parlor do that kind of a business, which is tattoos on Jefferson, in downtown. So I, to me, being consistent, being transparent, and only making exceptions when there's a true hardship, and I'm not saying you don't feel like it's a true hardship, but there are other vacant areas that I think a dance studio can go to. So I feel that safety is also a, a majority of the problem. I've talked with Director of Public Works, and you expounded on a little bit, a little bit deeper, could you add to that, or anything that I've said that we talked about?
Yeah, I mean, I think, if, if I could add, and I put the map on there, Brad and I worked on that, just, just to make sure we're, what you're voting on tonight is allowing dance in pretty much the entire downtown. So for that reason, that would concern me. I think dance studios, which my daughters dance to, there's heavy pickup and drop off, everybody's said that. You know, the downtown district doesn't allow drive-throughs, it doesn't allow these things. So I would be concerned with any more dance studios downtown. So to me, what's on the agenda tonight is allow, if you look at the map in front of you, dance studios could pretty much be anywhere in the entire village, with the exception of twenty properties that are zoned B1. So with that, I do have a concern over safety, for sure. It's not necessarily the kids, it's traffic circulation, obviously, Main and Jefferson are, are two largest collector streets.
Did you repeat that one, when you said that drive-through, correct?
Drive-throughs aren't allowed in the old downtown district either. So those things, to me, drop-off, pickup, you know, Principal Saunders spoke tonight too, we put those in, we still have issues on Fourth Street, so it's not like, you know, there's issues here. If I was to speak specifically about that property, the prop, that I do have a concern with ninety-degree parking. I've, I fought for a long time, the junior high, we finally worked with them, mayor, to get rid of ninety-degree parking around the entire junior high, which I'm very proud of. The spots specifically in front of Ann's, not just her, the gentleman next to her that owns a business, and then even further down, those ninety-degree parking are concerning spots. I know I've talked with you, trustee Hilliard, about the traffic on Main Street, and being, you know, a higher speed coming through there a lot, there's a lot of blind areas when you back out there, for sure. I've witnessed this since, since this came up. But like I said, tonight, you're asking me the question, I don't think we should allow dance studios in all of downtown, with the, with the exception of twenty businesses in the entire town. You know, there's a lot of other buildings in here that for sure wouldn't be acceptable due to the amount of traffic. And I think the business on Jefferson is a tough one, too, that I do get a lot of phone calls on. I've been requested to put, you know, mid-block crossing across there. We've looked at those things, it's too close in proximity to the signals. So those are a lot of questions that I, I will get, and will probably continue to get, especially in the main Jefferson Street corridors, for sure. So without weighing in specifically, and to answer your questions, those would be my concerns overall.
So that's, that's all I have. Anyone else?
My thought and reason for bringing this is to allow it to go to the Planning Commission, for them to hammer it out, instead of us deciding that, because it's really their job, I think. And that's their responsibility to deal with these. So that was my hope in bringing this, that this would pass tonight and allow them to, to vet it out.
Trustee Mendel, I, I think that the attorney expressed that even if we would vote this down, they still, Ms. Vanderborn still has the ability to attend the Planning Commission to see about, get it to B3, I think. Is that correct?
Both, both, yes, your statement is correct. Also, to trustee Mendel's statement, if you were to refer this matter to the Plan Commission, it is within the scope of their responsibility to receive testimony and make recommendations for you, considering the testimony that comes before them about, you know, what the particulars of an ordinance should be. So both statements correct, independent of each other.
Okay.
I'll call for a question.
Call the vote.
Excuse me, can I respond?
We have adopted public comment rules that limit comment from the public to the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. So once that public comment period is concluded, that's the end of the opportunity for the public to address the board.
Michael said nine is...
Correct.
Driving is, I don't have nine, some of that's not accurate.
It's your opportunity to provide comments, the board is limited to the public comment period, so you don't have that opportunity now. Let's call it.
Sorry. Thank you.
Call the vote.
Mendel?
Yes.
Parrot?
No.
Lunar?
No.
Hilliard?
No.
Leach?
No.
Motion passed.
Any other trustee have anything else to bring forward? We do need a closed session?
Closed session is requested tonight pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash two C2, to discuss collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees or their representatives, and pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash two C5, to discuss the purchase of real property for the use of the village.
Do we have a motion to close this?
So move. Second.
Call the vote.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Mendel?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.